We'll call out where the November 1st meeting of the city council, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation America indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please go roll.
Mrs. Fritch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Fritch?
Here.
Mr. Scharr? And Mr. Knippel previously informed staff that he'd be absent from this evening's meeting.
Correction, approval of council minutes for October 18th, we have a motion approved as written.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondence, don't you want to lead off here?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time, and I had one question on the cones up by Brewster which I answered, and I've got a letter that came to me for the Parks Board that I'll put on file. Uh, that was it. Mike?
I received a letter from a constituent, I think Rudy also received it, I handed it in to Misty for, to put it on record. It was about the lead and the lead testing and stuff with the water that we may want to discuss about how the DNR funds and things like that can be used. So it might be a future thing, we, we have a little discussion on, at least public discussion, so we can understand what those funds will be, can be used for, can't be used for, and what it truly means to have those funds.
Anything else?
Does that mean you'd like to see it on an agenda?
I'd like to see it on an agenda, like some type of a presentation on what the funds are, when they're available to us, what, what they can be used for legally and what they can't be used for.
Well, that's changing on a regular basis as we continue to move forward, so putting it down is kind of hard. You're probably going to have to stay more towards, this is what the conversation has been to date. Because, you know, it's like, you know, you have to have city authorized plumbers, so we have to go through a list, but if nobody bids to be the city authorized plumber, then what do you do? There, it's just all kinds of issues with them.
And, well, the letter was hitting on education type things, and I'm not sure if it could be used for education type things or testing, primarily testing of children birth to six, and I don't, I don't think it can.
This is purely for replacement of lead service laterals on the private side, that's all it's used for.
Okay.
But if you're concerned about testing, you can go to the Jefferson County Public Health Department.
Yeah, and that was mentioned in the, in the letter also, is just maybe getting that information out so people know that they can go take their children, have them tested, things like that, so.
There is a public information meeting where all those entities will be at in December.
In December, yeah, I saw that, so.
Will that come before the Public Works Board?
The public information meeting?
No, discussion of the lead issue. We've talked about-
It'll probably be on the council's next agenda.
It's just information.
We could invite the Public Works Board to come to the council meeting, couldn't we?
Well, we've talked about it a little bit.
So we'll mention, we'll bring that up at the end of the meeting for other-
Agendas.
Yep.
And Diane?
Yeah, quiet.
Quiet, okay. Questions and public comments, seeing no one in the audience, do we even have to read it?
Do I have to read it?
No.
All right, we'll move on to city manager's report, Steve?
I have the general fund register on there, the utilities check register, monthly check balances, third quarter budget report, clean sweep letter from the county, and the ADRC advisory committee agenda. Other than that, I don't have anything, do you have any questions?
Just a, on the clean sweep, is it getting, recycling electronics? I mean, are we going to have one here ever, I mean, is it, it seems like it moves around, I know it's getting more and more expensive, but is it just county and whatever the letter kind of, whatever?
Yeah, we gave them, we gave money to that last year, didn't we?
Last year.
Yeah.
The county has modified what they do, so like Watertown and, and some of the other cities that used to be countywide aren't taking it countywide anymore.
Okay.
So it, yeah, if you, we used to have like a, a day where you could go to Bank of Lake Mills and, I don't know, the football team or someone else helped take care of all that, but those are generally organized by private entities with county. We don't have a drop-off spot. Haven't as far as I know.
All right, that was it.
Does the county have a drop-off spot?
I don't think so, not anymore.
No, they used to, and they, they just moved it within the last year and only allow city residents.
Yeah, like Watertowns, you've got to be a Watertown resident now and, and drop-offs. I, I was going to look at, I've been given advice to go to Best Buy, and they, they recycle them, now I don't know if they charge you, I know to get rid of a monitor and two PCs was forty bucks, that's all.
I thought Goodwill took them too.
I don't know.
Um, Goodwill doesn't take them anymore.
I don't think they do anymore.
Well, let me shake that back, St. Vincent's doesn't.
That, that's true, yeah.
Goodwill may.
I think Goodwill does.
The, and, and Johns will too, but you have to pay someone who has to pay it.
Right, you have to pay Johns, you call them and you set that appointment for forty bucks, that's how that was.
Now, was it any other questions for Steve? We'll move on, minutes from the Police and Fire Commission, July 21st, Plan Commission of September 27th, the Library Board of August 15th, Housing Authority of August 23rd, and Library Board of September 19th, all of this year will be put on record. Council Business miscellaneous licenses, if there's no objection, can we read all three names? We have all three names read, please.
Veronica Canasson, Tabitha Cam, and Blaze Endle, all three for tavern operators license.
We have a motion to approve a tavern operator's license for all three?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Public hearing, 2017 general budget, public is invited to come address, seeing no one in the audience, we'll close public hearing. Ordinance 1171A, can we have the title read, please?
Ordinance 1171A, 2017 general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 1171?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments, if you want to make, call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Public hearing on the 2017 capital budget, seeing no one in the audience, we'll close public hearing, ordinance 1172, can we have the title of that one read, please?
Ordinance 1172B, 2017 capital budget.
Uh, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 1172?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And, uh, discussion decision, let's see, property acquisition, uh, what's this one? Motion, is it 161111? Can we have that read, please?
City Council motion 16-11-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Single Source Inc. regarding property acquisition services for the South Main Street project, whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin state statutes, has established certain standards and procedures for community development within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills, whereas City Council of the City of Lake Mills is responsible for the planning for the physical, physical development of the city, including those areas outside its boundaries, and that in the city council's judgment bear relation to the development of the city, whereas City Council of the City of Lake Mills is responsible for maintaining of the physical environment of the city, including those areas outside its boundaries, that in the city council's judgment bear relation to the, to the development of the city. Be it therefore moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, that the agreement for property acquisition services from Single Source Inc. 1250 Sunny Slope Road, Brookfield, Wisconsin 53005, a copy of which is attached hereto and made part hereof, is hereby approved. Section 2, that the city managers authorize execute agreement when it is finalized by Wisconsin DOT and takes such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement. Section 3, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Wisconsin Department of Transportation.
And we have a motion to adopt motion 161111.
So moved.
In a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, let's-
Let's have a little discussion.
There we go.
Yes.
How much land are we talking about, just small little parcels or?
There are, you have to remember, there are two different types of acquisition, there are temporary limited easements, and then there's actual property acquisition. Ninety-five percent of it is temporary limited easements. So, I think there are two actual properties where there will be property acquisition. One is the White Barn on the south end of the city at the curve. That whole property will be acquired and the barn will be taken down. And then there'll be some property at the mobile station on the, right out here, that will be acquired, and other than that, there will be very little actual property acquisition. Some of the other types of acquisition issues will be like trees. And those types of issues, but the, the actual real estate is just a temporary limited easement to allow for construction type issues, like when you run your sanitary sewer lateral up to the property line, you have to dig a little bit beyond the property line, and same with the water, sidewalk, you know, some of the equipment will probably spill over and some of the grading behind it, and grading and seating behind the sidewalk. So they usually acquire a five-foot temporary limited easement, which is exactly what we did with a lot of properties on Elm and Birch, although there we also did a lot of property acquisition, we actually did more property acquisition on Elm and Birch than we'll do on this highway project.
Any other questions?
It's a, the issues are, is that, I guess, you know, as you bid the contract, there are certain types of issues that they, that each district kind of wants to see in their contract. And so the WISDOT agent is sending back like, you can only, you, you have to use the short form, and this is the short form, and the guy sends back and says, well, we used to use that short form, but we got noticed that the US Farm and Transportation doesn't accept that one anymore, so you have to use this one, and then she goes, yeah, you're right, and she says, but you can only, your bid was for this, and so anything you do over and above that has to be done in this form, and he's like, yeah, you're right, and then, one of the, one of the issues was, is one of your people on your list isn't, isn't authorized by DOT, and he said, well, she worked for DOT for thirty years, and she went to work for us this winter, and so, do you think we could get her on? Seeing as that's what she did for DOT for thirty years, and, so it was those kind of issues. But as soon as those little things are knocked out, we'll, we'd like to be able to sign the contract as soon as possible, because we'd like to, what they have to do next, once the contract is signed, is RA Smith comes in and does all the marking on the ground to show people where the actual easements will be for property acquisitions, and then they hold a meeting, which they want to do early December, called the Blitz, where they call everybody in, they tell them what's going on, they show them, they go over all the details, they have everybody available, and then they start moving through the property acquisition process.
So they're looking at having that meeting in early December?
Yes, they would like to have it as soon as possible, because they're already under a really tight schedule.
What, are we still progressing forward with this, or is there going to be the delay, or?
We are still progressing forward with this, there will be a construction project, your question is what year, and nobody will know that until the governor's 2016-17 budget has been approved.
So I'm assuming this, this cost was already what we had budgeted for?
Well, the state actually pays for it. We pay upfront and then they reimburse us.
That's good news.
Another question? Anyone else? We have a motion, second, call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Resolution 1648, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution 16-48 directing the city manager to implement the brush pickup policy, whereas the City of Lake Mills here and after referred to as the city operates and maintains a street department for the benefit of the municipality, and whereas the city council is determined that it is appropriate and necessary for the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city, that the city provide brush pickup services, and whereas the Public Works Board has reviewed the amended policy and determined that they are generally satisfied with the defined course of action. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, that the City of Lake Mills City Council has reviewed and approved the brush pickup policy, date revised November 2016, copies of which are attached hereto and made part hereof. Section 2, that the city managers authorized to use said documents and take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said action requirements. Section 3, that the city clerk is directed to maintain an official copy of this resolution and the amended brush pickup policy. Be it therefore resolved this first day of November 2016 by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, the City Council is hereby authorized the council president to sign this resolution.
We have a motion to adopt resolution 1648.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Discussion?
It looks like- This came out of the Public Works Board, and there was a, one of the members questioned it, and staff looked at it and suggested some changes to the policy, and this is what resulted.
This is the changes, okay.
If this passes tonight, can we do something, contact the leader and, and, and the city website and so forth, and try to get this out so people can, that it's brought to the public attention about the changes and the procedure?
Yeah.
You know?
Especially if we're going to look at a fee of thirty, thirty dollars if they, if they put stuff out there and don't call to get it removed, it'd be-
I, I would ask that it just goes on the website, since we had a policy about the paying for, or paying for the paper, yeah.
Or is there a way that this could be approved but not put into place till January, that we have time to get it in the paper?
And actually, you won't have any significant effect until next year, starting in April, and that's one of the reasons why it's up now, is because the, the most significant portion of it actually is in April.
Yeah.
Uh, because they changed some dates about when we start pickup. We generally put all our brush pickup stuff in the paper and on the website, we at least asked them to publish, and they historically have, so most of this information will end up in the paper in one form or another. Some of this has been an interpretation of the policy from the beginning, so like, if you put brush out and it gets picked up by the city, you're billed thirty dollars. So it's, it's just been kind of a, I don't think anything in here substantially new other than the date of the pickup. One of the things that we probably should note for staff at the front desk is that if you call to have your brush picked up, you still have to come in and pay before we'll pick up the brush, so, you know, calling is nice, but until you actually come in and pay, you're not going to get your brush picked up.
There still will be the twice a year free brush pickup.
Yes, and, and we also do, you know, if the wind speed hits, what, forty miles per hour, then we go out and do a pickup under whatever the emergency something, or, or disaster response or something like that, we do a pickup when the wind speeds hit a certain speed, we do a Christmas tree pickup, and those types of things, but as with every policy in the history of man, there are people who are going to do everything they can to try and fudge how it works, so over a period of time, this is kind of trying to incorporate the issues that are involved there.
So if you don't take advantage of the free pickup and you want to pay the thirty to have it picked up, is there a way you can do it on the web and use PayPal or something, or do you have to come in here and pay? You have to come in here. Okay.
Or have someone else come in here and pay for you? Well, it's, you know-
I suppose you could, you could mail a check.
If I'm ninety years old, I don't mind, but I can have my knees come down.
Until a check clears.
Yeah, you could have someone else come in that situation, but we see a lot of, in that situation, people just haul the brush to the yardway center for them.
But not all people have a vehicle to do that, you know, if, if you have that, that's nice, but, you know, put that in a Honda, you're in trouble.
After I got rid of my truck, it became an issue, yeah, how do I, how do I get it?
I put it in the back of my van, I just lay down a tarot.
I put it in the back of my car too, but my car is full, so, a couple of things, one thing I wanted to mention when I read it, um, that the Christmas trees go, can go out after Christmas, but not in a bag, you could take it out of the house in a bag, so you don't get all the beetles in your house.
But you don't leave it in the house, right.
But once they go to the curb, they must be just a Christmas tree. And the other thing, and I'm still a little confused with the, and I, I know everybody else knows this, but the brush is neatly stacked with butt ends facing the flow of traffic placed on the terrace, does that mean the part where I cut, where the branch is cut, is facing the direction that the cars are driving?
It faces the road so the guys can pick up the brush and put it in.
No, that's not what it says, it doesn't say that it's facing the road, it says it's, it's parallel to the road with-
Facing with the flow of traffic, so the, the butt end should face the same way a car is headed, that way when they pull up and they grab it, it's ready to shoot right into the chute.
Okay.
Because if you, if you point it out like this, or you pace, put it the other way, then you got to pick it up, turn it all the way around, and, and some of those branches get pretty big and they get all tied together and-
So they just want to be able to slide them off the tree lawn into the-
And a, and a brush chipping machine is one of the-
Facing the way the cars are driving.
Right.
Okay.
And one of the-
I mean, I'm just asking, because I'm just one confused person here.
That's what, that's what it is, and, and a chip, and a brush chipping machine is one of the most hazardous pieces of equipment you will work with.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's very important to make sure that the brush is put in in an appropriate fashion, make it safer.
So they will drive up, parallel to my curb, stop at the end where the ends of the butt ends are, and then feed them into the machine?
Yep.
From that end, and then they'll go down the street and do the next.
Clear enough, yeah, all right.
I've got it, all right.
Any more questions or discussion of that one? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And recommendations, future agendas? Mike?
Yeah, I guess maybe, I don't know if it's going to be a discussion or if it'll be a, maybe a-
Education.
Education, to let us know what the, what the funds are there for, and what you know at this time of how we can use them.
Understanding it's fluid.
Understanding, yeah, understanding.
It is purely for the replacement of the lateral service, there's no other option involved right now, and I don't believe there ever will be.
And that's the lateral service for homeowners.
But that being said, there, there's a lot of, of information about what the homeowners can do in relationship to the money, because there's only so much money, and once it's gone, then you're on your own.
Yeah, but don't we have to decide how to distribute that, whether grant is, spread it out more or pay it all?
Yeah, and that's, you know, right now we're looking at and saying, well, there's, you know, possibly three, four hundred lateral services in the community, possibly.
Damn.
The likelihood, based on what I've seen, so, if you're looking at South Main Street, and that water main went in, in the, in somewhere in, in the nineteen twenties, way South Main Street, South Main Street up here went in in nineteen twelve or earlier, way south, they, they ran from the south edge of the, what was the city then, which is just probably right down here, a couple houses, and they ran it all the way down to the railroad depot, there were probably five houses between the edge of the city and the railroad depot, now there are hundreds of houses in that area. When they got constructed, may, would depend then when the lateral services stopped, so if you looked at that and said, well, that whole strip is going to be led, no, you're wrong. And that's the way it is on every city street, you go down Water Street and you look at it, some of these houses had really big lots, and they had a carriage house, and they had a little barn where they kept all kinds of other stuff, and they subdivided it maybe once or twice, so you've got three new homes in there, one may have been done in thirties or forties, and another one done in the sixties or seventies, and so, the conditions on that street are totally different from what happened in, at the original point of time, so if you, if you said, well, all these houses were here, and this water main went in in nineteen twelve, so they're all godlike, no, that's not true. And so, we're starting to work back, and so that's why, on our next agenda, we will have our DNR consent order. And one of the things we have to do is provide them reports every six months, starting from the time we sign off on the lead, on the consent order, how we're doing on finding our lead lateral services, that's why in the budget under the community and planning section, there was a, a pay item for someone to go do the search, because you can't have someone from the water utility do it, because that's not allowed, it has to be from the general fund. And so, we, we have to have someone go out and for the next two and a half years, basically search every home in the city to see if they have a lead lateral service. And that we have, every six months, we have to put that report together and submit it to the DNR. And, um, then that will make a determination about how our, our replacement program goes. Now we've, when I got here, I, I assumed, and this, this should be quantified, I assumed that the city had historically been replacing things on a regular schedule, now that I see based on the research that we've done, there are water mains in this city that are over a hundred and twenty years old, haven't been touched, um, that makes for a, okay, the vast majority of all the changes that occurred in the, since two thousand and two. And, so how, and then from that standpoint, we were only looking at replacing ours, we didn't look at the property owners, and then all of a sudden it became an issue of, well, you had to notify the property owners, I don't, I'm not sure where that came in, somewhere around eight or nine, and then, and, and then with Flint, it really ramped up, now the people were really interested. And when we were doing the Mulberry Street public hearing, and we talked about that, there were some people who were really interested, and there were some people who say, well, you got to die for something. And, and so that, that kind of gives you an idea, now, the DNR is, is really working with us on this project, but if you, one hundred lead lateral services, which we probably could potentially have already replaced, at three thousand dollars a lateral service, which is cheap for replacement on a private side, uh, that's a hundred people, so you, if we have more than a hundred, then you got to figure out, well, are the rest of the people go fish, or do we make the grant seventy-five, twenty-five, fifty-fifty? of the people go fish, or do we make the grant seventy-five, twenty-five, fifty-fifty? Then it becomes, so we wanna see how many led lateral services we have, how many people start applying for grants. So I say, you, you wanna find out as quick as you can whether you have a led lateral service, and you wanna get in and get your name on the list for replacement.
I would agree with that.
So to come back to you, what would you like on the agenda?
Well, it'll be part of the consent order.
Part of the consent order, yeah.
So that'll work?
Just letting us, yeah.
Okay.
And how do we find out whether we've got a led lateral or not?
There's a city web, the city's water utility website goes into detail about how you can determine if you have a led lateral service or not, and if you're really concerned and you're not, and you're not, can't figure out what's on there, you can call, they'll come check it for you.
I, I have known that I was a little bit late.
Which is, it happens.
I do have correspondence that I'd like to get put into the record. So this, this concerns testing kids for lead.
Yeah, we talked about that.
You brought that up?
I did, yeah.
Well, okay, good.
Yeah, and we can't use the funds that we have for any of that, but they can go to Jefferson County Health Services and have their, have their family members tested.
Okay, so you got the letter?
I did, yes, and I turned that in, yeah.
And that, and that agency will be available on the night of the Public Information Meeting, along with DNR representatives and everything, that, that meeting sometime in early December, but there will be a big blitz out on that one, too.
All righty, Diane?
Yeah, I think I feel confused, and if I feel confused, probably other people do too. Could we do just an informational item on the agenda to tell people what they can do with their TVs and things that are broken?
Like the electronic recycling?
Yes, yeah, could we just have that, just to discuss it, and, and then we can put it on the website, and, you know, some phone numbers they can call, how much is it gonna cost? You know, every, we get people that drop it at the yard waste, because they don't know where to put it.
They don't know what else to do with it?
I mean, I, and I think it's partly because they just don't know, and they're frustrated. So that would be one thing. Also, I wanted to mention, and I should have done it earlier, too, there is a meeting tomorrow night here in this room, or no, downstairs, for Highway Q and Highway A from the DOT.
For the bridges, for the overpasses over ninety-four and Q and A.
Yeah, at five-thirty tomorrow night, till seven, I think it is. So if you're interested in bridges over the interstate, be here at five-thirty downstairs.
All right.
Yeah, right? Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, don't forget, there is early voting, polls, the early voting closes Friday, so avoid the rush, come in early.
Peace, morning, stay. Anything else? Everybody wants? Please, we're joined.